Good evening. My name is Angela Bardino and I'm a member at the Gilbert School in one of the classes hosting tonight's debate. I'd like to begin by saying thank you to everyone who came out tonight. Your attendance is greatly appreciated. Before we begin, I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The format for this evening is as follows. Each individual will be allotted two minutes for an opening statement, and at the end of the debate, each party will be allowed two-minute closing statements. During the debate, the time to discuss each question among fellow party members will be one minute. Each party and the petitioning candidate will have two minutes to answer. Should any candidate wish to rebut another candidate's statement, please raise your hand and you will be recognized by the moderator, Elizabeth Dagel. You are allowed one and a half minutes for rebuttal. If there is no rebuttal, we will proceed with the questioning. Finally, we would like to ask all candidates to speak clearly into the microphone. The debate is being streamed live on the Gilbert School's YouTube page, TGS TV. This is thanks to the efforts of Gilbert School Video Production and Broadcasting Teacher Stephen Hodges and his students, Mariah Castillo and Joshua Flores. We will have two timekeepers, Eondra Cabral and Josaira Lapointe, to discreetly inform speakers of their time remaining to answer a question. The sound and lighting for tonight are being handled by students from Mr. Scott Minterley's Theater Tech class. The students asking the questions are Caitlin Tucker, Ilani Small, Ilah Gutick, and Tim Crandall. I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Dagel, our moderator for tonight's debate.
My name is Elizabeth Dagel and I am a student from the AEP Government and Politics class and I will be serving as your moderator tonight. We will begin with a two-minute opening statement from each of the candidates. First, we will have Tara Elsundy from the petitioning candidate, followed by the Democrats, Cheryl McGlynn Heffernan and Renata B. Waldron, and then followed by the Republican Party, Salvatore J. Lavettrey III and Sandra A. Strubar. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Sorry, guys. You may now begin.
So, is it introduction?
Yeah, your opening statement.
Thank you. I'm running again after following a two-year, filling a two-year vacancy. I really enjoyed my time with the board. I'm currently a work for a Hartford-based nonprofit, and we fund other community-based nonprofits. I formerly worked for, as a U.S. Deputy Clerk for the United States Government, Federal District Court, and I just, you know, I have a daughter who's currently a fifth grader at Pearson School, which is a huge motivator for me to be, to be running. But really, I mean, I have the, all students in mind, and with every decision that I've made, you know, it's, I'm grounded by the fact that, that it's, I have the, the entire community in mind, really. I've really enjoyed the time that I've had on, on the, on the board so far. I've learned so much. I have so much still to learn. I'm serving on the, the curriculum and the, the finance committees, and I'd really hope to continue the, the progress that we've made and continue to make improvements.
My name is Cheryl McGlynn. I also go by the name Cheryl Heffernan as my, my capacity as an attorney. I took my husband's name McGlynn when I married him two years ago. Sean and I moved here five years ago. A year after that, I ran for the Board of Ed and I was elected. And I have found that to be an amazing experience. To serve this community that we've adopted as our hometown in such a way has been very rewarding. Our focus, my focus, and the whole boards, I would say, has been on the children, on providing a good education, a safe environment for them, which improves not just the quality of life for our children, but the community in its totality. I have served on the Finance Committee, the Policy Committee. I have also worked in doing negotiations for the teachers' contract and with the Gilbert School. I've been very active to the extent I can, and I've really enjoyed that. I think my focus has always been on the kids, and I ask for another four years so I can continue the progress that we have made in this system for the last number of years. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Renee Waldron, and I've been-
Do you guys just want to hold the mic a little closer?
Closer, sure. Okay.
I think it will be when you're speaking.
Can you hear me? All right. So, my name is Renee Waldron. I've been a teacher for 20 years in Torrington, a special education teacher, and I also have three children who have gone through the Winchester Public Schools. I believe that Winstead students deserve the best quality of education possible, and I want to ensure that that happens by, by being committed to building strong relationships with the schools, parents, and the community through positive, open communication. I've attended some board meetings recently, and also PTO meetings, and the Dylan's Wings of Change presentation here at Gilbert. There are so many people who just work so hard, staff members, dedicated parents, to enriching the lives of the students in, in Winstead, and I think that, you know, we can, we can definitely continue the good work that we've done. So, you know, as a special education teacher, I have always felt that, you know, establishing a positive learning environment is really extremely important because kids learn best when they're in an environment where they feel, you know, good about themselves and feel supported. So, I want to make sure that that happens. And so, I guess as a parent, as a teacher, and hopeful member of the Winchester Board of Education, I really am committed to doing all that I can to kind of keep things moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Can you hear me? I am Sal Lavettrey. I am running for Board of Education here in Winstead because I believe that it's gotten a little out of hand, this state, this country, and this town, frankly, with how kids are treated in the school system. Parents should have the ultimate decision, whether it comes to masking, vaccinations, curriculum, all of the above. We need to let it be our child, our choice, not the choice of somebody in an office somewhere. And that's why I'm running, to give the power back to the parents where it belongs. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Strubar, and I am running as a Republican for the Board of Education. I'm so happy to see the students here taking an interest in civics, and I'm glad that I can be a part of the debates this evening. Thanks for inviting us. I'm an over-20-year teaching veteran. I've had hundreds of students over the years, and to me, teaching is a calling. It's a very difficult job, especially if you're invested in the success of each and every student, but I loved almost every moment of it. I'm also a product of public education, and I wish I could say that I pretty much loved every moment of that. But I know there are many that do, and I would posit that there are quite a few who don't, and that is why I feel that public education needs to be reimagined and reworked so that it serves a greater number of children. As you may or may not know, parents across the nation are making waves in Board of Education meetings. I've seen parents eloquently and passionately voice their frustrations at what they deem to be government and administrators making decisions about their children in which they had no say. From masking to library content to critical race theory, parents have felt that they have not been allowed to be a part of the decision-making process. This needs to change. Board of Ed members are elected by and completely accountable to the citizens in their school district. It's not domestic terrorism to have questions and voice concerns as vocally as you like. Actually, it's representative democracy in action. This is in a nutshell why I decided to run for the Board of Education so that I too am able to represent and have a say in these matters that concern most Americans. I look forward to tonight's debate. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the questions.
Hi, my name's Caitlin Tucker. I'm a senior at the Gilbert School, and I'll be asking questions tonight. The first question is, what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the Board of Education? This question will be answered first by the Democrats, then Republicans, then the petitioning
You will now have one minute for discussion.
Hi, so I'm going to answer this question. I feel that it's all about building up and coming together as a community, and I think that that is the most kind of important piece, is making sure that we're working together as parents, along with students and, and teachers, to make sure that our, our education here in Winstead is the best for our kids.
I think that, you know, Sal and I are mainly interested, it's a, it's a triune when you have a parent and a teacher and a student. It's, they need to work together in order to have the best outcome for school students. And I think with the Hinsdale renovation, we have a really great opportunity here. I'm glad that, that we're doing that. I think it's going to be of benefit for the young children, and I think just to continue to strengthen, to increase our numbers, I am concerned about the, about the number of children that have been pulled out of school to be homeschooled this year. I've met with several families and more who are pulling their school, their children out because they feel disenfranchised, and I feel that we need to, to make them more comfortable, and they need to be heard because they're pulling their children out because they don't feel heard. So, that's a problem within the community, excuse me, too. So, I'm hoping to be a bridge for that.
My why is really to contribute to the community, and this is a way that I, I feel that I can do so. I'd really like to continue to build the engagement between parents and the community. I think we've seen some progress with that, and I'd really like to stay on that upward trajectory. I would say that we have more kids in the district, I think, than we have in like eight years, and that's, that's a great thing. I think that really reflects positively on Winstead. I, you know, we've seen increased test scores, mathematics and reading. I'd really like to continue to, again, to, to support these, these improvements. And I just think that, you know, the public education, the quality of, of education in Winstead is, is the primary focus, and to keep doing what, what we've been doing and supporting the, the staff, the parents, the superintendent. That's it. Thanks.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? If not, we will move on to the next question.
Hello, my name is Ilah Gutick, and I'm a senior at the Gilbert School. And the next question is, what do you see as being in need of improvement in the district? This question will be answered first by the Republicans, then the petitioning candidate, then the Democrats.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
What do you see as being in need of improvement in the district?
Thanks. Well, I know Tara mentioned that test scores are up, so that's great. I know we were an alliance district, and I'm glad to see that that's happening. I know we have more students this year, and I would imagine it's because of people who've moved into this area from the west over there, New York. Again, I have a concern about the homeschooling, parents who are pulling their children for various reasons. I think we need to make sure that once this emergency mandate by the governor is finished with, that we have a plan for what we're going to do regarding masking for students. And again, with the Hinsdale renovation, it's a great opportunity to really introduce some new ideas for the younger children. I know I've talked to a few children's parents, too, who feel they're special needs children, that that program could be improved. So, with that, thank you.
Petitioning candidate.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I mean, I think this, just kind of piggyback on, on the reason why I'm running is, is to keep building on, on really what we've already built. I think we have an opportunity with Gilbert to improve relationships there, and I think with, with Mr. Shagru, just everything that's been reported back has been very positive. So, I mean, I think that's an area that certainly can use improvement, and like, let's be honest, I think there's, there's been some history there, but it seems like it's certainly moving in the right direction. So, I would, I would say that's probably one of the major areas.
So, I would say that one of the areas that needs improvement is communication. It's communication between the board and the parents. We've been, and the board have been very encouraging of parents to come to our meeting to participate. Last year, when we were doing things via Zoom, I was surprised at how few actually would show up on Zoom, and I would encourage people through my Facebook posts, like, come on, participate. We want to hear from you. We really do. And that's important. In a representative democracy, it's important to hear from people. The, so, one of the things that we're doing right now at the board is we, we always have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. That's always been as a courtesy to the community members, not to sit through our entire long meeting if they don't want to, in order to have a say. What we've decided to do is we're going to have two public comment periods. We're going to have one at the beginning, and then we're going to have one towards the end. So, after certain business, so if people want to comment on the actual businesses going on that particular meeting, they can do that, you know, afterwards, after they learn about it. So, that's a really good step. There's also communication between Gilbert and the Winchester Board. In the four years that I've been on the board, I've been involved in Gilbert negotiations, and it's been very frustrating because of the lack of information sharing, the lack of explanations to why things are done in a certain way. It's been a very unusual relationship. But what we're seeing now with the new administration is, is a give and take, is a communication, is a, is a desire to work collaboratively, something that we've been fighting for for the last few years. So, those are all good things. As far as students, we have new students coming into the community. They've been coming in from other districts in Connecticut, and we also bring in teachers who want to come here. People want to come because our education says it has gotten so much better that people want to teach here and they want to send their kids here. Thank you.
Are there any rebuttals at this time?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm curious, because I know you guys said that communication is key, and I agree, obviously, with parents, but we're trying, one of the things that I noticed is we were trying to find YouTube videos of all the meetings of Board of Education, and we couldn't find them anywhere. Is that something that's accessible to parents so that they can watch the meetings if they can't make it to because they were not on the city site or YouTube or anywhere that we could find?
During the time period where you were doing Zoom, the meetings were being recorded. Now, they are recorded when we're able to be in the hearing room, like for last, last week's meeting. Because of the holiday, we were put into the blue room where there's no recording capacity. But all the meetings are recorded, and they are maintained at the town clerk's office. So, you can go to the town clerk and you can listen to the meetings. That's the system for any town meeting. It's not particular to the Board of Ed. That's my understanding.
I think, can I just, I, correct me if I'm wrong. Were the, weren't the Zoom meetings actually-
They were recorded, yes.
Recorded, okay, as well.
They were recorded, and those were, those were posted on the website-
On the website, yeah.
-to be viewed. And again, they were available in your living room.
We will now move on to the next question.
Good evening. My name is Tim Crandall. I'm a junior at the Gilbert School. This question is, some have complained about the lack of communication between the schools in Winchester. How would you improve in the communication and continuity between buildings, administrators, and teachers? This question will be answered first by the petitioning candidate, Democrats, and then the Republicans.
You will now have one minute for discussion.
Can I just ask really quickly, just within the Winchester Public Schools?
All of them.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thanks. What if they had like a, a material saying like having a group up there? You're asking, I'm so sorry.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
If you mind, thank you.
Some have complained about the lack of communication between the schools in Winchester. How would you improve the communication and continuity between buildings, administrators,
All right. I'm just gonna, I think that this is something that, that we've continued to work on. I'm still, again, I'm, you know, being newer to the board. I've tried to pay as much attention as possible to, to what the history is and sort of how to move forward. I think that our superintendent has done a wonderful job as far as trying to be responsive as possible. I would say internally, I mean, if there is something that's brought to the attention of the Board of Education that's falling short within any particular school, it's not, to my knowledge, but I would say among the schools, it seemed to me that the, that the communication's been pretty good. I mean, if we're also talking about Gilbert, again, it seems like this is improving. As far as how to improve communication, I mean, that's a great question. It, it does seem like it's improving, but I, I know that's not a very solid answer, so.
So, with Winchester Board of Ed, what we have done through Mel, our superintendent, she has offered professional development, and we always try to offer it to the Gilbert teachers if it's something that's applicable to them. That's been going on for a number of years. I know the administrators, the current administrators have been meeting repeatedly. Again, they're working, trying to work more collaboratively so there's better transition, and that should continue. That definitely needs to continue. You know, that's what we've been doing historically, and it's getting better. Again, with the change of administration in Gilbert, we really see a different attitude, more collaborative, interest in working in a collaborative manner, and that's going to improve the, the relationship between the schools, and it's going to better things for our kids tremendously, especially as they transition from one system to the other. And you want to add, Mel?
I just, you know, I was, I did attend the meeting, the PTO for the Winchester Public Schools, but I'm not sure if there's a PTO for Gilbert. I, I heard that there may not be, but I think it would be a great, you know, initiative to start a PTO in Gilbert and maybe, you know, together, both PTOs can kind of work jointly. That would improve, I think, the relationships with the parents, and teachers are also involved in the PTO meetings, so that would be great. And even if we could do a couple of collaborative PD days, like professional development days for teachers at Gilbert and teachers at, you know, Bachelor and, and Pearson, that would also be a good. But we're always open to suggestions. So, if anyone has any suggestions on how to improve that communication, then we're always open for that, too.
Something that I noticed as running for this office, I could see that all schools would benefit from having a more public curriculum. It's very hard. The website needs work. Our Public, Winchester Public Schools websites are lacking, and if you get on there and look and really try to delve into some of the curriculum or education, it's very hard, even like we had mentioned before, the YouTube channel in Winstead, you can get on the YouTube channel and look at all the Board of Selectmen meetings and just watch every single one. It seems as you can't do that with the Board of Education for some reason. There must, there's a step missing there, and I feel like all this would benefit through the internet, using technology, if we can all get on that and work together to, to create a more positive and a better internet experience that we can all follow along more easily.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? We will now move on to the next question.
My name is Ilani Small, and I'm a senior here at the Gilbert School. The next question is, special education has been very controversial and sometimes contentious issue in Winchester. How do you plan to make that, make sure that the IEPs are followed as federal law dictates? This question will be, will be answered first by the Democrats, then the Republicans, then the petitioning candidate.
Can you ask the question? Okay, please.
Special education has been a very controversial and sometimes contentious issue in Winchester. How do you plan to make sure that the IEP plant, oh, IEP are followed as federal law dictates?
Okay. Thank you. So, as a special education teacher, you know, you do have to follow that IEP. That's the Individualized Education Plan for each individual student that has special education services. So, it, it kind of has to be followed, otherwise, you know, parents can file due process. So, I think that, you know, making sure that teachers have access to the IEPs is extremely important, and also, you know, working collaboratively with the Winchester Public Schools. I know that Winchester Public Schools is, you know, they, they do the special education piece at Gilbert as well. So, you know, it carries over, and therefore, that's also a reason why the communication between Gilbert and the Winchester Public Schools needs to be really strong, especially for that reason.
I'd just like to add one thing. IEPs and special ed are confidential. The Board of Education is not involved in the formulation or enforcement of IEPs. We have the administrator, we have the superintendent and administrators and the teachers and the special ed coordinator, they're responsible for it. We cannot legally get involved in that.
Okay. So, IEPs, as you said, right, the Board of Ed, it's really not their par view. It's definitely, the principal is the person who's overall, but teachers need to also feel supported. The job is hard enough, and having IEPs, you need to have enough support for these teachers so that they feel that they can carry out all the particulars of an IEP for students. So, as you said, it's really not a BOE thing, but I would imagine if it became a problem, it might become a BOE problem. Thanks.
I'm, I'm going to default to Renee's. That's my understanding as well, is that it's, the school is liable if, so the question was, how do you make sure that the IEPs are followed? I would think that if the IEPs weren't being followed, then the, the parents have a path to, to ensure that they are followed. So, I would say, obviously, I would increase in communication between the staff and administration as well as the parents if, if in fact they're being included in the process.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? We will now move on to the next question.
This next question is a question from the audience. If you have voted against a motion and your position fails, will you accept the majority's decision and support it?
You will now have one minute for discussion. Republicans, then petitioning, then Democrats.
Could you repeat the question one more time? I don't have it. Sorry.
If you have voted against the motion and you, and your position fails, will you accept the majority decision and support it?
I suppose that would based on, would be based on the, the motion. I would also always stand up for my principal regardless if everyone voted against it and I was for it. I would, I would go along with that. I would stand up for my principal first, not just go along because I lost the, the vote there. Thank you.
I would, I would go with majority. I would, I would go with majority. I would certainly, again, you know, as Sal said, I would share my opinion, but I would certainly go with majority. I mean, we're elected, it's an elected position, and we're representing the community. So, I mean, naturally, I think, you know, you would, you would go with majority.
So when you're on a board, you are representing the community that elected you. You are supposed to do your own due diligence. You do your arguments. You try to convince your fellow board members. When it comes down for a vote, you vote your conscience. You vote what you think is right. But when you, if you do not prevail, if you do not win in that vote, then as a member of the board, it's, you're not an individual. You're part of the board, so you'll have to support the principal that the board majority voted for. That is part of a democratic system where we have representative democracy. That's how it works. So it does not work if you have a member on the board who lost in their position, was unable to convince the rest of us to support their position, then go out into the public and rally against what the board's doing. That leads to a nightmare. It's not how boards operate. It's not a matter of compromising your principles. It's a matter of acting as a responsible member of a board to which you were elected to represent the people.
Are there any rebuttals at this time?
I disagree with that. Being an elected member, you are elected as well to serve the people who elected you. And if you choose to hold your position, that's your prerogative, and the people who voted for you, putting that trust in you to do so, so.
We will now move on to the next question.
Are you satisfied with the current level of funding for the school system? Or would you be in favor of an increase in the military to adequately fund the school system? This question will be answered first by the petitioning candidate, then the Democrats, then the Republicans.
You will now have one minute for discussion.
I guess I'll just jump in on that. I would support. I saw, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. Is because we've been working with a flat budget, a 0% increase for, gosh, I think it's seven years now. That's just unheard of. I think that the, our superintendent, our finance director, staff has done a really wonderful job of improving the schools. I mean, been able to really do, you know, the list is, I can, I can go through the list of all the improvements, but, but I would, I would definitely support, I would support that. And I would hope that the community would support that as well, because, you know, at the end of the day, our, our role is to support the students and to give them the best education possible. And unfortunately, that takes money. I'll also say that, I believe it's 95% of our budget are fixed costs. So things get more expensive. I need to wear my glasses so I can see that. And we have, not we, I would say the superintendent, the finance director, and I guess the board as a whole as well, because, because we vote, have taken strides to combine costs with Gilbert, with the town. You know, really, there's, there's, the list, again, is lengthy on what's been done in order to, to work within the budget that we've had. And, and the message has been loud and clear that it's, it's, it's time.
So the Board of Ed budget has been flat, I believe, for even longer than seven years, even while portion of our expenses, a significant portion of our costs, which has been the Gilbert School, has gone up. We have cut programs. We've consolidated. We've made as many adjustments as we can. We have been operating fortunately with some grants that have helped us in certain areas. We also, in that time period, we have added in a preschool program, an early education program, that is just a tremendous benefit to this community. But as Tara said, costs go up. Fixed costs go up. We've got teachers' salaries go up by contract, and there's new benefits which we have no control over. Oil prices go up. Utility, other utilities go up. So yes, there is very likely, as our grants disappear and as we have an increase in the population in our school system, and our costs go up, we're going to need more money come next year or the year following that. That's something that we'll work on as a board in conjunction with the superintendent and the finance director. Our goal has always been, my goal has always been, to try to see what savings we can make for the community, because we understand how tough things are. We're all living in this community. However, we have to be realistic. If you have a good education system, our kids benefit, the community benefits. That brings people into this community, increases our tax base. It brings businesses into the community. As someone who's invested into this community, I'm telling you, that's what happened. That is a huge draw, which is in benefit to all of us.
I would not support an increase by any means. I would, one of the reasons is, I've heard, and as I've been researching the Board of Ed and everything that's been going on, we actually have a lottery this year for 10 students, I believe, to attend Litchfield High School for $1,000 cheaper per student. Maybe I can see if I'm right on that. And so that kind of struck me, to go to Litchfield for an even cheaper amount. And I thought, well, then, why would we, we could go down if anything, and I wouldn't say that, but I wouldn't, would not vote to increase, and I would vote to save our money in the town. Thank you.
Let me just respond to that. As far as the Litchfield, that was an option for high school students to go there. No one in Winchester chose to take advantage of that because of the transportation costs, which probably is part of the reason why it was more cheaper. But the biggest issue is, those are people coming from Gilbert. We don't have control on this board of the Gilbert budget. So what we pay for Gilbert is dictated by Gilbert. So while Litchfield might be a little cheaper, we have no way of really getting the kids there. The time of transportation is an issue. We are interested in giving, you know, choice as necessary, but this is a Gilbert town, and that's been the way it's been. And, you know, we want to provide choices, but we can't control Gilbert's budget. So what they bill us per student or in total is not within this board's power and control. Believe me, I've been involved in those negotiations, trying to fight for it, for some control. We don't have that. There's legislation pending in the legislature or in committee that hopefully would get some action. We've asked Jay Case to address it. It has not. That would give us some control. But right now, we can't control what our, what our high school costs are.
Are there any other rebuttals at this time? We may now move on to the next question.
Our next question is, do you support the continued presence of the 7th and 8th graders at the Gilbert School? Why or why not? This question will be answered first by the Democrats, then the Republicans, and then the petitioning candidate.
You will now have one minute for discussion.
Okay, so at this time, where we're at with our, you know, with our relationship with Gilbert and current enrollment, we, we would support, we're, it's, it's going well here for the 7th and 8th graders, so we would support keeping them here, you know, and don't foresee any, any, any changes in the near future with that.
Is it costing more money to send the 7th and 8th graders to Gilbert? Seeing as we don't have a say... I'm just curious. Sorry.
I would also support keeping them here. Just speaking from kids I know in the community, everything seems to be going well with the ones that I've talked to, being up here with the high schoolers. And they've done a good job of keeping them separated where they can be, and I haven't seen any problems yet with it in the, in the community from the people I've talked to.
Yes, I would, I would support it as well. I don't see a need in disrupting something that's been successful. I think that there's certainly good opportunities. J.B. had it Gilbert. And so I, again, I don't, I don't see the need to necessarily disrupt that, particularly as, you know, relationships are improving.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? We may now move on to the next question.
Do you support the current relationship between the Winchester Public Schools and the Gilbert School? What would you like to see in the future? This question will be answered first by the Republicans, petitioning candidate, then the Democrats.
You will now have one minute for discussion.
I think the relationship is, seems to be, as everybody on the board has said, is growing stronger between Gilbert and the Winchester schools. So it should continue. Sal suggested, and I think it's a great idea, that perhaps, I don't know if the Gilbert, Mr. Shagru can also attend the Board of Ed meetings. We seem to hear a lot from Melanie. And that might give people more of an understanding of what is happening at Gilbert, if we want to continue to improve and strengthen the relationship between the two schools. I remember driving up here first. I have two students that went here that I taught, and they did beautifully up here. I remember driving up and looking at this campus and thinking what a gem it is for Winston. It's beautiful. It's almost like a college campus. And so definitely, we should continue to work collaboratively with Gilbert.
The petitioning candidate?
Oh, me, sorry. I, I would continue to support. I feel like maybe I'm giving the same answer here, to support the relationships. Again, I think there's gonna be a, we'll probably be seeing a shift in negotiations with the board turnover. So I'll be interested to see what happens there. But really, I think at the heart of this, again, is the kids, and we should be making decisions based on, on the children in the community and students in the community, as opposed to, you know, maybe what's best for, for the adults.
So I do think that the Winchester and Gilbert system should be more collaborative. They should be, work together better, and that's something that my board, you know, the Winchester Board has tried to do with the past administration at Gilbert, but it wasn't very successful. There was a history of inviting the superintendent, the administrators, and anyone from Gilbert can come, because we've had members of the board come to our meetings. There's nothing to prevent them from. In fact, we have as part of our agenda, you know, report on Gilbert that the four members from the Winchester Board who are on the Gilbert Board would report as to what's going on at the meetings. The administrators currently of Winchester and Gilbert are working together to try to see if we can come to a budget this year. That would be a nice, I mean, a contract this year. That would be a nice improvement. We'll have to see how that works out. You know, ongoing, you know, professional development group-wise, I think Renee's suggestion for PTO in Gilbert, that we work together and have some joint meetings between the Winchester PTO would be a wonderful idea, especially between Pearson and Gilbert. So there's some continuity there. There's, it's important that our systems work well together. And I know that, I've never been on, one of the Winchester Board members to the Gilbert Board, but I know from listening to the reports recently, since the change in administration, there's a new, there's a new attitude at the Gilbert Board right now, and it feels, the Winchester Board members who are on that board feel like they're being listened to, like they matter, and that everyone's working together. And that needs to continue. That's a wonderful way for us, as a town, to, you know, take care of our kids and make sure everyone's progressing. Continue the progress that we've been making. That's what's important.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? We may now move on to the next question.
Some believe that salaries paid to the superintendent, principals, and others are excessive for the town. Would you seek to lower the administrative costs of running the school system? This question will be answered first by the petitioning Democrats, then Republicans.
You may now have one minute discussion.
Can you repeat it? I'm just, is it superintendents in the plural? Is it?
Some believe that salaries paid to the superintendent, principals, and other are excessive for the town. Would you seek to lower the administrative costs of running the school system?
No, I, I, well, first, I'd like to say that we really don't have any control over how much the superintendent is, or administration is paid at Gilbert. So that's kind of off the table. I personally, I don't think there should be an adjustment. I think that our superintendent has earned, you know, is worth her weight in gold and worked collaboratively with, with the Board of Selectmen, with the Finance Director, and has actually brought in a lot of grants and been able to, I would say, certainly pay her own salary in that way. I think she's done a wonderful job, so I, I would say that, no, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of doing that.
So first of all, the, the salaries for Winchester, again, can't speak to Gilbert, are based on contracts that are ongoing. And I will tell you, that's my understanding from reviewing the statistics, that our administrators, principals, as well as superintendent are not being paid more than similar situated districts. In fact, we're kind of on the low end. And we get a lot of bang for our buck. For example, when we had to open the Oak Street School because of COVID distancing requirements, Melanie, our superintendent, became principal there and continued all her duties as the superintendent. So she, and we have, the same thing happens with the different principals at Bachelor and Pearson. They don't just fit a narrow definition of principal. They do multiple other tasks, including handling PD, and again, Mel, grant finding, grant writing, and everything. So we are get a lot for what we pay, and we don't pay on a high end. So no, I don't agree that it would be appropriate to support, that they're overpaying, number one, or that we should reduce the amount that they're being paid.
I would have to probably agree with that, and also to add on that, as a teacher, I would imagine that teachers feel the same way, that they would like to see an increase in pay. And that would be an interesting conversation to have, of how our teachers are paid here in the Winchester Public School system, because I don't think they're commensurate to the state.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? We will now move on to the next question.
What is your opinion on remote learning? Do you believe...
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear that.
Oh, sure. What is your opinion on remote learning? Do you believe remote learning should be an option for students who are required to quarantine? This question will be answered first by the Democrats, then the Republicans, then the petitioning candidate.
You will now have one minute for discussion. Do you believe remote learning should be an option for students who are required to quarantine?
quarantine?
So, you know, as a teacher, I've heard of, a lot of, you know, concerns with the remote learning, and I've also heard some, some, some great things about it. So in terms of students who are quarantined, you know, we feel that remote learning should, should be something that is available to them, so that way, you know, they continue to be able to use Google Classroom or something like that. However, I think that it should be, you know, asynchronous, which means the kids can kind of work on it whenever they need to, like, for example, like, especially the younger kids, someone can't be there with them during the daytime when school is, is, is in session, so maybe giving them more flexibility in having, you know, learning happening, you know, in the evenings when parents come home, they can, they can jump on Google Classroom and do some assignments. So that's.
The Republicans.
Thanks. Well, I would say that the alternative of a child being quarantined and not having any access to a classroom is not an option. It's obviously not the most optimal way of learning. As we saw last year, and I was a part of this, some of the parameters that were used for zooming classes is the student would check in and with their camera, and then they could turn off their camera. And who knew what they were doing while the class was being? So I feel that there should be stronger parameters in terms of zooming. For little children, elementary kids, I don't know that zooming classes is the most optimal way to do things, having taught little children. I think probably the best thing would do, to do, if they're going to be home for 10 days, or however long the quarantine is, is rather than zooming, which can be difficult for little ones, is to have the teacher prepare packets of work that they can do at home with a grandparent or their parent, or whoever they're home with. But yeah, definitely for the older children, they have to zoom. They can't be out for 10 days or 14 days without any type of schooling. I just have a stronger parameter of having to remain checked in with a camera.
I also believe that it should be allowed for, for kids that are quarantining. I think that, you know, it's a, it's certainly been a tool in the toolbox, and it's, I don't think it's a secret, that I think there were some bumpy roads. I know as a parent, we had to try and navigate that at, at the beginning of all this, and it, and it was a little tricky. But I, I do think it's critical to keeping kids connected, to the classroom, connected to their teacher, and, you know, helping to really support the relationship between, you know, the, the child and their classroom. And, you know, I think nothing can replace being in the class, for sure, but I, I do, I do think it's, it, it's proven that it's, it's useful and it's, it's helpful for keeping kids connected.
Are there any rebuttals at this time? We will now move on to the next question.
Do you think this, do you think students should be required to get the COVID vaccine once it's FDA-approved? This question will be answered first by the Republicans, then the petitioning candidate, then the Democrats.
You will now have one minute for discussion.
The COVID vaccine, or any vaccine, or any thing that you do medically, is a choice between you and your parent, and that's where it should remain, and your doctor if need be, and that's where it should remain. The school should have no say in anything regarding a child's personal health. Thank you.
I, I don't think that we need to make this decision right now. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I believe in parent choice. I do. But it, this is an interesting question, just because, because we're not, we're not really, the Board, as a Board of Education, we're not given the authority to mandate children having a vaccine, you know, as, as far as like right now. So, I mean, when we're looking at data, and I'm not a, obviously, a health professional, I'm just a parent, but as we're looking at data, it's, and I, I speak only for myself. My, my feelings have changed since the minute, minute this started. Depending on what information I'm getting, you know, the efficacy of, of the vaccines, you know, it's, it's minute by minute. So, no, I don't think the Board of Education is going to have to face making a decision around a kid getting a vaccine to come to school, as far as right now. But I do, I, at this point, if we're talking about the COVID vaccine, you said, yeah, I do, I do think that's, that's parent choice, and I think that's why it's been so difficult for the legislature to, to make these decisions. So it's, it's, this is a, you know, this is a hot-button topic.
So I would suggest that there's not one person in this auditorium who was not mandated to get vaccines in order to attend public school. That has been the way it has been for decades and decades. You know, I remember being in kindergarten, first grade, in New Jersey, and we were taken by classroom through the gym, lined up, and we all got the small, the smallpox vaccine. I have that mark on my arm. Our parents weren't there, it wasn't a choice, we all had to do it, and that was to protect ourselves as well as everyone else. The Board of Education for Winchester Public School will not be making a decision regarding vaccines. That will be up to the health professionals and ultimately the legislature and the governor. So what, what my opinion is, as to whether it's appropriate or not, is irrelevant. It's not a board decision.
Are there any rebuttals at this time?
I don't have a rebuttal, but I do, you know, again, I mean, I don't have a, a solid answer on it. As of this moment, I don't know, and, and my feelings could change, you know, as, as we find out more information. So, you know, I just wanted to, it, again, not a rebuttal, but it's just, you know, it's a tough question to answer. Ask me tomorrow.
I do have a rebuttal. I would say that even though it might not be a Board of Ed, I think it's important to know where we stand as candidates, and we've seen in Connecticut, the religious exemption eliminated by the legislature in the last several months, and they've also approved something called the HB 6389, which allows schools to treat children for mental health issues, substance abuse, sexually transmitted diseases, testing and treatment, and reproductive health without a parent's permission, and also, parents have to pay for the bill through their insurance. And I think we're seeing a slow erosion of parental rights, whether it be from the masking to the vaccines, to these two bills that, that were passed. And when are, it's a slippery slope, let me say that. It's a slippery slope, and we're not asking for the state to be co-parenting with us. Parents should be able to make this choice. Thank you. For the sign.
So parents do have a choice. They have a choice at what school they, what school they send their children to. If you send your children to a particular school, whether it's public or private, they're going to have to follow the rules of that particular school, whether the rules are established by the school, as in a private institution, or they're just established by the government as in a public school. That's the way it is. That's your choices, and who you, and who you elect to represent you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I do have to rebut that one, too. It's not much of a choice to back a parent into a corner and say, your child either takes this vaccine that we're determining is for children from, who are, have a very low rate of infection, or you pull your child from school and you homeschool them. You cannot say that to a single parent who is working, you cannot say that to two parents who are working. The state should not have a mandate as to these decisions.
And again, this is not a decision for the Board of Ed, the Winchester County.
Yes, but we should have our few stone. I guess I'll fight on that one.
Are there any other rebuttals? At this time, we have completed our questions. We will now, we will now move on to closing statements. First, we have Democrats, followed by the petitioning candidate, and then the Republican.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you so much for, for giving us the opportunity to do this. It was, you know, I think we were all a little bit nervous, and, so, but, you know, thank you for coming out. It's nice to see you out there in the audience, because that's what we're all about. We're all about building those relationships. So, you know, hopefully we can find some common ground and, you know, move on.
I'll echo Renee, and thank you for being here. It's been a pleasure to answer your questions. I hope you were provided with a lot of information that you were seeking. You know, we're running to be on the board, for me to continue on the board, to continue the progress that we've made in this school system, which has benefited all of our children in this community. As a product of public schools and five children who have been in public schools, two of which are still, it is important that we provide good education, we provide a safe environment for our children, a healthy, nurturing environment, and that's what we've been doing in Winchester, and I'm very proud of that.
Petitioning.
Keep forgetting the order, so. I don't know if it's possible to climb out of that introduction hole that I dug for myself. So I apologize. But no, I, you know, I'd love to continue as well, building on the progress, and, you know, that, that has taken place at WPS. I think it's an exciting time to be in a parent here. I'm, I'm so glad my daughter's in school here. I think it's, it's exciting time to be a, a school board member. I've really enjoyed the past two years. I really look forward, you know, I would love another four years. You know, our new relationship with Gilbert, new, new school being built, you know, and I really enjoy, I think that one of the parts of the job that I, or the, the role that I like so much, is kind of being that conduit to the community and to the parents and to the school. I love talking to the parents, I love kind of hearing their concerns, or, you know, their praises for, for what's being done, and I, I really, you know, I, I love this town. So I've, and, you know, I am thankful for the guidance that I've gotten, really from the entire board, from all parties. It's been a really supportive crew, even when we disagree, which certainly happens. But it's, it's been a, it's been a great learning experience, and, you know, hopefully we can, can balance fiscal responsibility with what the students need.
Thank you. This, this was a great evening. I haven't been here since graduation night 2009, so this is really great for me to be back here. Really, the reason I wanted to run again, I'll echo, is to really make a more open flow of information to the public, the parents from the schools, from the Board of Eds. We, everyone is, knows what's going on in our schools. I feel that's very important and paramount. And to everyone that's here tonight, thank you, because you are getting involved, and then once we all get involved, that is really the most important thing. And I'm also, just want to echo one more time, that we think that parental choice and you being in charge of your own kid is paramount, not just in the medical, but also with anything in the curriculum as well. So thank you for that.
Yes, and I too would like to echo, it's great seeing people here, the young people. It's great that you're involved. You're the hope for the future. You guys will be sitting up here, hopefully someday, doing this, too. I just want to say that, that we need both sides. We need many multiple voices and many ideas to have the best outcomes and the best practices. And so when it's top-heavy on one side or the other, you don't get the best outcome. So I really appreciate being here and running for this board and this community, and it is building community to have our children have the best type of education. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Maria Luisustache. I'm a junior here at the Gilbert School and a student in the civics class. The class would like to thank all the candidates for participating and the audience for joining us tonight. We would also like to thank Stephen Hodges and his video production class for filming and live streaming the debate. Additionally, we would like to thank Scott Minnally's Theater Tech class and students for providing the lighting and sound tonight. We hope you found this debate as informative and beneficial as we have. We also hope that this will give you a new perspective on the issues the Winchester Board of Education is facing. The class also encourages you to go out and vote for the candidates of your choice for the Board of Education on November 2nd. We would also like to invite you to the Board of Selectmen debate next Thursday at 7:00 PM. Thank you and have a good night.